This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local cable access channel 18 and on the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. So, first thing is selectmen and public information. Anything from the board?
No.
All right. Anything from the public that's not on the agenda? All right, so we'll start with a continuation of our public hearing we had last week for, I don't think I need to read it again since we already opened it and continued it, for Basco Grill. And we asked for an alcohol serving plan, which you've presented to us, and a menu, which we got. And so if you'd care to come up, we'll discuss what you gave us.
Hello?
Hello. Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. So, I submitted all the paper I've read, and I'm happy to answer any question you might have.
Okay. Members of the board, Jamie?
Yeah. There were, I just had a couple little ones. This was great, the menu, seeing everything laid out was really helpful. I do think that's a good standard for the town, is to see what food is going to be served alongside any kind of beer or wine. So, thank you for doing that, and also for including the alcohol serving plan. One question I had on the alcohol serving plan is right at the end, almost the very last line, it says, "If I hire a cashier who's not 18 or older, we will have a designated person to serve beer and wine to the customers." This designated person, who is not 18 or older, we will have a designated person to serve beer and wine to the customers. Do you have to be over 18 to sell also?
I don't know.
I believe so.
I don't think you do.
No.
You have to be 18.
I think you have to be 18.
You have to be 18 to sell.
To sell in a...
So, this might need to be clarified about, if I hire a cashier who's not 18 or older, we will have a designated person, not just to serve beer and wine, but to, you have to have that designated person be the cashier also then?
No.
Is that right? Or no?
If you were in a liquor store, and you were running the register, you'd have to be 18 or over.
Right.
Okay, but are you saying now the question is, somebody just had a meal and had beer, and now they're going to go pay the cashier?
Well, they would place their order. They would order at the counter.
Yeah, they would order it from that person. But if, yeah, I think if they're saying it's, they're designating someone, I think that, I feel that...
If somebody's designated, I think that's fine, but...
Okay. And then, that just caught my attention, but the other thing was, the designated person will pour the beer or wine in a cup prior to serving? Is it possible to have that changed to in a glass? The one where we won't be having, I believe there's no single-use plastic cups, or is that not part of it? I'm not sure.
No, it is single-use. Now, that might be more for to-go items.
And the other is...
But it would help reduce waste, other plastic waste.
Yeah, and it would also help reduce items from going out the door. It's a lot harder to take a glass of anything out the door. So, I'd love to see that changed. And then, on the actual application, on the page, the application for a new license, number one, license classification application. We'd just like to see where you have your little sentence about lunch and dinner restaurant and establish shopping plaza, blah, blah, blah. Add, please see attached statement for further conditions of license, the alcohol serving plan.
Which is what you submitted.
So, we're going to add that, so that that document then becomes part of the alcohol license for beer and wine, with the change about the glass.
With the change about the glass.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, Martin?
Yeah, this is just a beer and wine.
Correct.
The public hearing notices malt. But malt is a whiskey.
No. Malt beverages are, like, beer is a malt beverage, or some of the, you know, mics.
But malt includes bourbon.
No.
Yeah, it does.
No.
Not in the license.
That's hard liquor. The malt beverages, it has a certain alcohol limitation on it.
All I want to establish is just beer and wine.
Yes, it is. Like Mike's Hard Lemonade, those are malt beverages.
Okay.
Yeah, Zima.
If anyone remembers Zima.
Yeah, right. Schlitz malt liquor.
Maybe that will be on the menu. It looks great, with those little changes. I think it's great. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Oh, okay, any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the new beer and wine license application from Sabco LLC, doing business as Basco Grill.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero. All right, you're in business.
The menu looks delicious.
It does, yeah. No, I'm excited. It'll be great to have another lunch place.
I know, I know, I'm trying.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
That Basco salad sounds really yummy.
All right, so, the next one was 5:50, so we can't do the fees yet.
Wow. Ten more minutes, we can do the rest of the agenda.
Get ahead of yourself. All right, so how about we do, I think Jim's will be quick. All right? What do you think, Jim? The Visitors Tourism and Promotion Services Board.
No, no, no.
What's that?
I can stretch it out if you need me to.
We only need 11 minutes, all right?
Soon.
Where are we here?
So, in your packet, you have the suggested revisions for the Visitor Tourism and Promotion Service Board charge. And most of this, I believe, was originally established by the state, the wording here, and that we, at whatever time that this started, in 1989, we had the forum, which is now a defunct organization. So, what, one of the few changes that I made was changed the one member nominated by the Eastham Forum, I deleted that, and instead of two members at large, changed it to three. So, we still have the same number of people on the committee, but you can see the breakdown of where they come from, whether they're from the chamber or from the members at large, from the community. Other than that, the only thing I changed was the word "selectmen" to "select board", recognizing that that change has come. And that's, that's the only thing that I could see that needed to be changed and possibly could be changed, seeing that most of this is from the state.
Right, I don't know if you're aware, we did have, it was several meetings ago, a sort of a template that we're going to put all of our charges into, that talk about appointing authority, terms, and things like that. So, it might look a little different when we get finished with it, but you'll definitely be involved with what the final one is before.
But you see the basis of what...
Yep, exactly. I, yeah, no, I think it looks great. So, anybody else have any comments or questions from Jim?
Is that 11 minutes?
No.
No.
There's other things we can do. There's plenty else we can do.
I prepared a little song.
God help us.
You can sing?
Yeah.
You can sing?
Thank you.
Well, everyone can sing.
Shoot, well, yeah. Do we want to hear you?
Exactly.
All right. All right, so we can't do licensing. Well, we could, I suppose. Yeah, why don't we do some of the licensing? First, we have on-premise all-alcohol Arnold's. Need motions and seconds on all these.
So, these are renewal, so...
These are all renewals.
Okay, so I will, can I do a group to approve?
You have to read them off if you do that, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the following seasonal licenses for Droop Inc., doing business as Arnold's Restaurant. On-premise all-alcohol license, common victular licenses, or I guess it's not just Arnold's. I said it wrong.
That's okay. So, Arnold's was the on-premises all-alcohol, and then we have common victular.
Common victular for Arnold's Restaurant, Whale Walk-In, and Bikingshores Motor Lodge. Then mini golf license for Arnold's Restaurant and Gift Barn, and coin op license for Gift Barn.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero. All right, Jackie might be right. Okay, action discussion on sending the proposed zoning regulations changes to the planning board for a public hearing, and the petitioned article to lay out part of Toll and Drive to the planning board for public hearing. So, both of those need to be referred.
They need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to send the proposed zoning regulation changes to the planning board for a public hearing, and send the petitioned article to lay out an accepted position of Toll and Drive, a portion of Toll and Drive.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero. All right, we're not going to do the budgets.
So, just for your information, the Toll and Drive petitioned article needs to go to the planning board. The planning board will make recommendations to you, and then you have to vote to lay out the road prior to town meeting. Not sure whether all that's possible, but we will try and get it done.
Two months.
Two months.
All right, minutes, Monday, March 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, March 2nd.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero. Town administrators' report. What do you got? Your notebook page is empty, so...
I know, I don't have anything for tonight, other than, we're, we have a team together for the coronavirus response, for the town's health agent, fire, police, library, COA. And they're meeting at least weekly at this point, so we should have a statement for the public next Monday.
Okay. We're still not there. It's a public hearing, we have to wait, so we have five minutes. We need some Jeopardy music or something. What else can we talk about? We could talk about some of the warrant, I suppose. No, because that's part of the public hearing. The Board of Water Commissioner portion. But we could start talking about the warrant a little bit. First glance that, good night. Did anyone have any glaring concerns, or we just saw it for the first time last week about things in the warrant?
Question, why are we combining the tee time with the 400 committee?
Because they're, we don't have to, we can split it up into two articles, but they're both, they're both planning functions, they're both coming through the select board for final authority, and I just thought it would be easier to combine them into two articles. Just convenience, more than anything else.
I don't know if people have objections to one or the other. I doubt it.
Yeah.
So, are you concerned that if they do, that it would be...
It would be hard for somebody to vote if they felt differently between the two.
I can kind of see that. We did just get rid of one article today, so, right? Add another one back in.
We can add it if you want to, split it up.
Split them up?
You can make a motion to town meetings.
Yeah, you could. Somebody, we need to.
I suppose we could do that.
That's okay.
After discussion...
I mean, it's not, I guess, the other thing is, we're transferring money from free cash. We're not raising and appropriating money, it's not in the budget, it's just an additional thing, so...
I did have a question.
I did combine two others.
Including CPA, right?
Yeah, CPA is down to one.
That's going to be that same issue.
No, 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 we're doing CPA. Did I send out the most recent CPA to you?
I've got a rough warrant draft, but...
Did the draft have an article with A through H? Okay, so it's an article with A through H, so each project is listed separately?
Yeah.
So, I discussed it with the moderator this morning, and he thinks that it's perfectly fine, because basically each, each, the way we've, we're going to list it, each A through H, each project will have its, where the funding's coming from, where it's going to, and the project. So, you could call out to the moderator, just like a budget line, I don't want to do B. Yeah, I don't want to do B, and the motion will be very simple, because we don't have to do the from-tos in the motion. So, it'll be as printed in the warrant, it'll be easy.
Unless something's called out.
Would you want a separate recommendation from the finance committee on each, on A to H, like we do on the lines in what was formerly known as Article 12?
Yeah, you can do the, I, you could do it either way. Yeah.
Or both.
Yeah.
We can have a vote, recommendation vote at the end of article, well, right now it's 33, but don't hold me to that number. And then after each A, B, C, down the line.
Finance committee.
Yep. That sounds like it.
Which one did we get rid of?
So, the, the town council has combined the new stabilization, special stabilization fund with the article that assigns money to it into one article. So, it'll be one article, the family support package will be both the creation of the special fund and the funding of it.
One down. I guess in that, I was curious about the amounts. We hadn't put in any, the housing yet.
Yeah. So, in order to keep, excuse me, in order to keep it under...
Five.
Five. It, the way I worked it out today, it's, if we give housing 100,000, it will be 490,500,000. $490,500.
Wow.
Because we have to do 125 for the food programs.
And did you get a new break, that was my other question, a new breakdown on the break, remember the meals?
She's not going to have an exact number for me until April 1st, but I think that we, when she and I, this is the head of food service for NOSA, when she and I sat down, we thought 125 was a good guesstimate based on, it's, you know, she knows that it will come in less than the 167 that was quoted to you, but more than...
Gotcha.
So, that's why I'm using the placeholder of 125,000. But we can tweak those numbers right up until town meeting, so we can put them out in the warrant. If they go down between now and town meeting, we will adjust that in the, in the motion.
Okay. All right, any other comments on the warrant for right now? All right, if not, hey, it's 5:51.
I just want to say one thing to the FinCom before we leave the warrant. I did get the redlined version from John Giorgio, and I'm about halfway through it, so I'm going to finish that and get it out to you tomorrow morning. So, we will have by Wednesday, a final draft of most of the articles, and the ones that have question marks or may change, we can pull out and...
Art is asked, can we, for the meeting Wednesday, have paper copy as well?
Yes, I think that's best, yeah.
Yeah, I'm with you over.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Did you get what I sent you relative to the strategic plan?
No.
The thing we talked about, I sent it last week.
No, I did not.
Okay. I'll send it again.
All right, we'll go ahead and start a public hearing. The Eastham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 9th, 2020, at 5:35 PM, at Eastham Town Hall in the Earl Mountain Room, 2500 State Highway, Eastham, Massachusetts, 02642, on proposed FY '21 increases or setting of user fees, license fees, or permit fees for various departments. A list of proposed changes will be available at Town Hall in the Administration Office Monday through Friday, 8 AM to 4 PM, and on the town's website at www.eastham-ma.gov. All right, so we'll open the public hearing on the fees, and we had a first glance at this last week. And, let me go back here. We have dropped one change, it looks like, and that was for the, the south docks at Rock Harbor.
What is it now?
Back to the 250, that it has been.
We're keeping it the same.
Keeping it at 250, instead of by the foot.
So, basically, Martin, the only reason I pulled it is because we are in the process of redoing Rock Harbor. And in that process, the south docks are still not complete. So, I think when, next year at this time, we'll be looking at the same thing, but I think it's, it's fair to pull it now and wait until next year to do it, where I think the other fee that they're recommending with the, what do we call it?
Parking at the boat.
The boat ramp, launch fees. I think those will definitely, the parking area, that's going to be ready for this year.
Yeah. Okay, I, I don't disagree with your analysis. I think it's just important, those boats out of the sick dock are pleasure boats, and they, they should ultimately be paying the same fee.
I think we're, I think we're of like minds that we absolutely have to figure out what the purpose of that south dock is, and what the waiting list for. We have to sort of try and get some uniformity between the two docks, but once we get the amenities to the south docks that the north docks have, then I think I'll feel totally comfortable recommending that, you know, we go forward with the fee change.
Or if we want to keep them commercial docks, we talked, Jamie and I talked about this just before the meeting, about developing, you know, guidelines for those commercial, because right now, I believe it's, if you just buy a commercial fishing license, well, and if you have a 25-foot sailboat, you're not really doing commercial fishing in that. So, somehow to, you know, regulate who, who is actually there. And if it is a pleasure boat, they should be paying the pleasure boat rate, as opposed to a working commercial fishing boat. Jamie?
Yeah, I, that's why I think I'm in agreement on waiting on this too, because I think we need to create this standard, create our baseline, and then once that's established and we have our enforcement process, then you can affect the fees, because you're going to be basically providing very clear and defined service at that point.
Okay, all right.
I think we have a question, maybe on the floor.
Can the public weigh in on that?
Yeah, wait, just, I was going to open it up here in a sec. So, the FinCom, you don't have a quorum, but obviously you can still individually give, give comments when we open it up. Anything else from the board, questions? All right, so now we'll open it up to the public, if you'd come up to the microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Patrick Faye, Keewee. But I agree with Martin, as, have used those sick docks before, they seem very similar already, I can't tell the difference between the docks. So, I think for the town, and it's fair, as, as a person that will be probably paying this year the fees for the sick docks, I will gladly pay the fee of everybody else, because I really don't see the difference between the docks. And it's fair to everybody in the town, and also the other dock holders, why should I get a discount when the docks are, right now they're identical? In fact, I like them better, it's closer to the, closer to getting, I'm not a very good parker.
There you go.
So, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, what was your name again, sir? Just, for the record.
Yeah, Patrick Faye.
Patrick Faye, thank you.
I also think it's a great idea that they charge a fee, potentially charging a fee for the ramp, because I'm a user of Wealthy as well, with my, with my trailer, and I pay everywhere else, why should Eastham be free, and have the taxpayers pay that when a visitor should pay that, when people are driving from all over to use our ramp for free, when we're paying to maintain it, and if we can make it, have other people contribute, give more money for the town to improve the facility.
It's a very busy place to have a ramp.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments from the public on this? Any comments from the staff that's here to... No? Oh, Silvio?
He's got an entourage.
No, no, absolutely not. So, Silvio Gennaro, DPW superintendent, thank you for having us this afternoon. I just want to take the time to actually thank my staff, Scott Richards, our new harbor master.
Welcome.
Mike O'Connor, our senior natural resources officer, and Nicole Payne, our shellfish constable, who kind of, as a team, we all put these fees together. So, we heard feedback from the residents, we've heard feedback from the users, and just like Jackie said, I think we weren't ready for the sick docks, but we think all the other fees were something that's needed. So, there was a lot of research and a lot of discussions that went into this, so we would appreciate your support of these updated fees. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed fees.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed fees.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero. All right, now we have to adjourn to Board of Water Commissioners to return to regular session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Board of Water Commissioners to return to regular session.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Or was there a second?
No, there wasn't. Jared, second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. All right, we are Board of Water Commissioners. I'm the vice chair of the Water Commissioners, but the chair of the Water Commissioners is not here, so I guess I'll run this one too. So, here we have the proposed fees for the municipal water system, and I saw Kim was here again after...
She's here.
Sitting through our marathon meeting last...
That was ridiculous.
Last Monday.
It's much earlier this week.
I know.
Hi, I'm Kim St. Avon, Water Contracts Manager. We are recommending implementing new fees to our water use rates and fee schedule. We would like to change the water fees to read per quarter, rather than yearly, because we bill quarterly. A backflow prevention device is installed in order to protect the municipal water system from possible contamination caused by the backflow of water from customers' plumbing systems back into the municipal water system. A backflow device is typically needed at commercial properties where the possibility of contaminants is greater, as determined by the system operator. The device needs to be inspected upon installation and subsequently inspected once a year by a certified personnel. Our system operator, Whitewater, performs the inspection service for us within their contract. I am recommending a fee of $75 be implemented, as is typical of other surrounding towns. We would like to implement a fee for customers wanting to connect their fire suppression system to municipal water system, but choose not to connect their domestic service. A business or residence that only hooks up their fire suppression to town water and kept their domestic on a well would pay $250 per quarter. If at any time the customer chooses to connect their domestic to the municipal water system, they would no longer be subject to the fee. We would then change the regulations under other terms, from fire service without domestic is not permissible, to fire service without domestic is subject to a fee. As zoning changes occur and properties become developed over time, there is a possibility that a new service line or water main would need to be adequately, would need to change to adequately serve their needs. In this case, the town would grant permission for a licensed contractor to tap the existing water main and install a new service line. The recommended fees reflect fees seen in nearby towns. We are, we are in the process of building a fill station at the DPW for commercial trucks to purchase water. We recommend charging $50 per company per year to use the fill station, and then the current maximum rate, which is $7.50 per 1,000 gallons. The only other town that does this also is Brewster, so we could make some money off of that.
So, basically, anytime you change the fees, we, we do a public hearing, because you are in fact changing a portion of the regulations. So, anytime we touch them, we're changing the water regulations, as the Board of Water Commissioners. And I think what Kim has done this time around is very thoughtfully looked at the regulations the way they exist, with Silvio and our team, and, and made tweaks to where we've noticed either we're not collecting fees, we need a fee because we're providing a service and we're not getting reimbursed for it, or our regulations don't match either the bill, the bill cycle, the, you know, those types of things. So, we want everything to be obviously uniform between the, the regulation and the bill. So, that, that has been kind of problematic for us, because our billing company, when they, when we bill quarterly, we want, we want everything to match. So, those are the basics. So those are the basics. Some of the fees that we're adding are fees that we have to go out and inspect or look at the backflow preventer. So we want to make sure we're recouping some of those costs. And then the third big change is, for the past year and a half, we've been discussing what it means for a business to hook up to fire suppression and have, we don't charge any money for fire suppression. So obviously, if your building is on fire, we are not going to charge you per gallon to put that fire out. We're just going to put every, you know, bead of water we have on it. But a lot of, we have two customers now that have hooked up to fire suppression without making that domestic connection. And so we want to make sure that we either charge them money for that service because it's a fabulous service, as we all know, and/or if they decide to hook up to the domestic service, then we will not put that charge in. So I think that's a good compromise for where we were, which was to say, you can't just, our regulations very specifically now say, you can't just hook up to fire suppression. You have to do both, so.
Jerry?
I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order. And then if no one else has a comment or a question.
Does anyone else have, Jared?
Yeah, I just had a question about the change in the water fees. Sorry if you've answered this already and I missed it. It seems like a pretty drastic change. Is there any explanation behind that, or?
In which? The quarterly fees or the, I guess the first page on the fee schedule?
They're the same. It just is written differently. It used to be written per year, not per quarter. So the fee hasn't gone up in any way. It stayed the same.
We're just trying to make it uniform from billing versus regulations.
It was a little hard to understand because it said per year, so I think people were confused by that.
Very confused. You get your bill, you don't know, it doesn't matter.
Jerry?
I haven't gotten a water bill. You might want to make that comment.
Ever?
No, for this quarter, there's been a.
Oh, there was a, I just got mine Saturday.
Okay, good.
So you were busy. Maybe you didn't see it. No, that's where the problem was.
They, PDF, there were 90 accounts that the PDF didn't attach. So they resent them just Saturday. And they changed the interest on that to push it out also.
Jerry? One question on the backflow. The inspection fee, is that for commercial only? Or is there a backflow required on residential?
It's mainly commercial. A backflow is needed for a property that is using water for something that may have contamination. So like a restaurant, so it's mainly commercial, yes. But like a warehouse would have a backflow device.
But so it's not in this, I mean, if, put water on my house, I don't need to have.
But now, I, well, I did have a, we have one on our boiler.
You have like a check valve.
Oh, a check valve, okay.
Which is a little bit different.
A little bit different, okay.
That doesn't need to be inspected.
Gotcha. I mean, he did look at it and say, it was dripping when they hooked up. Because probably the pressure changed or something. So he said, yeah, keep an eye on that. If it keeps dripping for a week, get it changed and just let me know. And that's what I did, so.
Thank you.
All right, so there's a public hearing? Anyone from the public wish to wave? All right, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And any more questions or comments from the board? All right, well, thank you, Kim. Thanks for sticking around again. Turned out to be a much faster meeting. You never know. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the water fee changes.
I will make a motion to approve the water fee changes.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, so we, I think that's it for, oh, we had minutes. Board of Water Commissioner minutes from March 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Water Commissioner meetings from March 2nd.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four to zero. All right, I'll go ahead and make the motion to adjourn to, back to regular select board session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero. All right, we're back at the select board. And all we have is budget review and discussion and warrant review and discussion, which we sort of touched on already.
Yeah, so just, I think I sent out, Jerry, to you guys as well, the updated budget pages, just the Article 12, that's Article 2 now. No?
Yeah, I hope so. I got them somewhere.
Okay, I'll send them out again tomorrow. I've been notified by council that I have to actually place the override items in the budget somewhere. So rather than keep them in a separate article, we're going to place them in the budget. So if the override, if that article doesn't pass, if the override doesn't pass, it would cut the budget. But I just have to discuss that with him a little more. But, so there may be food and the preschool may have to go into the human services line. That's the only other budget change I have. Otherwise, it would stay stable.
All right, FinCom, have any questions, comments, criticisms?
We'll have them probably Wednesday.
Oh, you're gonna start meeting?
We'll have our meeting Wednesday and do our recommendations. And if there's any other, if there are any changes after Wednesday, we'll probably have to have a meeting before April 1st, so we can get the recommendations into warrant.
We'll be here next Monday.
Yes, and I think just to, I know Jackie's aware of it, but to just let the select board know that I received a contact from the chairman of the Finance Committee of Brewster, who was seeking to have a joint four-town finance committee meeting concerning the school, the school project, the building project. That has, at the moment, they're looking to potentially have just a meeting of the four chairs. And they're trying to set that up and then decide whether or not to have this four-committee meeting. And I'll keep you informed. It's something that we should not, it's not something to be hidden. It's an important issue for all of us. I think it's a very important issue for Brewster as they're looking at half the cost potentially. And we'll see what they say. We'll still, we'll have our recommendation on Wednesday. But we'll continue those discussions because I think it's important to have Eastham included in that, any kind of four-town meeting. And we'll keep you informed.
Thank you. Jamie?
Do you feel that there should be any other representation from the town at that meeting?
If there is a, not in the four-committee chairs. If they do have a full four-town meeting, the Brewster chair said that he would invite select board if they wanted to come of the four towns and the school committee and the superintendent. Whether or not this comes to fruition, I have no idea. There are a lot of things, as you've heard, we've received letters and so forth from outside of Eastham telling us what they think we should do and whatever. And you, I think our position was pretty well stated on Monday where we are. I don't have it solid yet, but we will decide that on Monday. We'll see what the other towns, it may be nice to know what the other towns are really thinking. I think it'd be positive because this is a, the school building project requires all four towns to approve. Otherwise, it goes down. So it may well be, if certain towns have better arguments to try and support it or whatever, that will be a good thing to know. Or if there are other arguments opposed to it, it would be good to know for planning and our own purposes. So we're not trying to hide. And I mean, each finance committee has to legally make a recommendation, although we don't have any authority, but just a recommendation, and we'll do that. And I, Jamie, I will keep you informed. We're not going to go hide something here. We're all in it together, whichever way the vote ends up going, we're all going to have to deal with it.
Thank you.
All right, Jared?
Still on Articles?
Yes.
The Article 22 plastic ban?
Yes.
We need something at the beginning of that that is much more succinct and descriptive for people to understand, I think. Because it goes on and on and on, and we've seen it so many times. But I think it needs a clarification at the beginning.
In the beginning or in the summary?
A clarification or a reduction of words.
Yes. It's good to have all that information in there, but I think.
Oh, the whole preamble, you mean?
Yeah, I think right after Article 22, we need something more succinct there so people know exactly what we're proposing.
Should we move the preamble to the summary? Martin had a similar comment.
Yeah, I think we could reduce that, the preamble, just to bullet points, maybe?
Bullet points.
What is the summary we're talking about here? I don't see that.
There is no summary because the article is so long. And I usually write the summaries, but I didn't do it because I wasn't sure what your will was on that. But what we could do is make a version of the preamble, which is state, usually what we do in the summary is state either why, you know, why the article is important, or in some cases, I will say, if this article is accepted, this is what will happen. You know, and I reiterate it so that people see it. But I think that the preamble, some of it is probably good and some of it should, could be.
Oh, yeah, no, I like all of it. I'm just saying that right at the beginning, people need like, here's what this is. Here's exactly what it's asking for.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think the preamble, really, in looking at it, there's really nothing to pull out as far as bullets necessarily in that. But we can put that in the summary, the preamble. But then go through generally what the article's about, reducing.
Yeah, because this is halfway through the articles for the night, so a lot of people are going to be overwhelmed already.
Right, but we could put, you know, balloons, takeout, plastics and polystyrene.
Yeah, because I agree. Yeah, because what gets read at town meeting, when we do present the article, is just going to be that one sentence at this point, right?
The motion?
Yeah.
It may be that. It may be, you know, adopt Article 22 as written in the warrant.
Right, so, yeah, it's good to have, I think, a little list, a little bullet list of what's being produced.
So let me work on that. We'll just do some.
And I know we've seen it a million times, and I hate to dump that on now, but after, I've seen it a number of times.
This is the perfect time to talk about it, Jared.
And this also still has the carryout bag with handles that needs to be changed.
Okay.
So just carryout bag.
Wait a minute, wasn't it further along, it wasn't in the preamble?
Section 1 definition?
Oh, okay.
Checkout bag shall mean a carryout bag.
I don't know why I missed that in this one. I changed it in one version. This is what I, this is what happens to me.
No, it's a very good point because you're right, people start to get.
And this is the other reason why in the zoning bylaws, they wanted to put the definitions at the end as opposed to the beginning. Because you get, like, you get pages and pages and pages, and then you get the actual article.
Yeah.
And do we have anything more on that article that we wanted to talk about?
On the plastics?
Yeah, because I was just going to move on to 23.
Well, the first, the only thing that town council did was change the fines because the fines are, by state law, they're set at a maximum of $300. So he did change the fines.
Okay. 23 is petition, so we can't change it.
Can't do anything to it.
Oh, we can't even add anything before that?
Nope. We could amend at town meeting, make a motion to amend, but we can't.
My biggest thing is that I don't think everyone knows, looking at this, that this is the same article going to 13 towns on the Cape. Because I think most people, if they just see that as like, whoa, that's going to, that just goes back to all of our previous assessments that this would just hurt Eastham businesses. But if they, if people voting know, okay, this is going to every town on the Cape.
I guess we could put a, can we put a summary onto it, or?
Always.
We could put a summary onto, we've done that with other petitioned articles. And say that this is being done, and I think it's 11.
I think it's 11, but then a lobbyist called me and told me that that is not correct, that it's not the commercial ban. So I think we need to clarify with Mahatvi what.
Because I met with Gary about a week and a half ago, and it was 11 then.
He said it's the commercial ban, okay.
Yeah. But we can definitely look further into that and then add our own summary of if that's the case.
Because I think for a lot of people in town are seeing all of this and thinking it makes sense, but just know that bottom line, it would end up hurting business if not for the overall regional idea that, okay, we're all doing it. So from Orleans to P-Town, nobody's getting hurt.
Yeah, if you can clarify that with Gary so we could do something.
One question? If Eastham's the only town that votes in favor of it, what happens?
You can, I think this was something we had discussed, that you can delay enforcement.
Right, well, it is already to the 20.
We've already delayed enforcement in the actual article, but you can further delay enforcement until.
It's September next year.
Next year, September 2021, yes.
So it's a more of a level playing field. Because we talked about the concerns of like neighboring towns not getting on board and that impacting.
So we'd have a whole town, at least one town meeting before it would be implemented.
So we could change the vote.
We could rescind it, we could amend it, whatever.
Then to add to Jared's concern, seeing this straight off without that explanation written there, you're going to get no votes on this because you're not guaranteed.
I wouldn't say that. I wouldn't say that at all.
I think it's a different perspective of the resident than it is from the business owner. I think the resident is going to be really on board with this sort of thing. I mean, just based on the article we had last year, where it was a, you know, overwhelming vote in favor of a ban.
Bags and the polystyrene.
And this is just water.
Okay, I'm just raising issues that may come up. When you try and look at something that goes across towns and there's nothing in the article itself that says this, you have a date of enforcement, not a date that this will be enforced this day or whenever so many towns adopt it or anything of that sort, which would, might have been the way I would have written it way back, but I don't know what the laws are in Massachusetts. But I'm just saying that that's something that potentially, and we'll talk about it more Wednesday at our meeting, but that's something that potentially will come up. We might write it, we might do something in our letter that we write to the town in front of the warrant that say that this, whatever we decide in Article 23, that if other towns don't adopt it, it can come back and delay enforcement or something of that sort. We may, that might be some way for us to get around if we have that question.
Yeah, it's petition though, so like I said, we can't change.
I know, that I know. I'm one of those bad guys too this time.
A fair point, because those are things we did talk about. And we did even talk about having some kind of number for like number of towns that have to pass it. But if that, still, what could happen is you could end up with all upper Cape towns passing it, and then our surrounding towns, which are more impactful, not. And so that, but I do think maybe whoever's presenting the article that night, I don't know if we need a summary ahead of time or what. But just the person being knowledgeable about our ability to.
Right, I think we can totally add a summary.
Yeah, I think both are helpful. So in this case.
And we can speak to it at town meeting, too.
To be able to expand on it.
And I'd like to mention this for anyone who's doing a petitioned article. In, for the past three years anyway, when we get articles by petition, what we do is we put a petitioner's summary in the warrant if the petitioner has something that they would like in the summary section, and we also do a town summary. So just in case there's a disagreement between the petitioner and the town, we can show that to people in the warrant.
Before it ever gets there.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's agreement, we can show it in the warrant so that people understand it better. So, I'd welcome any of you to give me information about what you would want in your summary and, and I can reach out or you can reach out to Gary, too, Amy.
Yes, I already, yep. Okay.
Because I think that's the fair way to do it.
Yeah, and we'll get input from the finance committee, too, on that after your meeting Wednesday, to which we can, you know, kind of thread into that summary.
Okay, great.
Well, they have the power of that letter. We need to make sure that letter's positive for the things, though.
You'll be at their meeting.
I'll be at their meeting, lobbying on your behalf. All right. You really aren't.
Never negative.
You really aren't. Yeah, but you're, you always feel badly when you have to say no, Jared. That matters.
Dear. All right, any other business from the board?
No.
No? Anything from the FinCom?
Oh, about this, the warrant?
The meeting in general, that was our last.
Oh, just the warrant, you know, hopefully, I mean, the big hole now is the charter review thing.
Right.
As you know, we're working on it.
It seems like it's going okay, though, right?
Yeah, as long, as long as we get something back. So, we, we wanted to have a public forum or discussion next.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, so we're hoping we could piece together a charter review committee meeting Thursday to review what, you know, what Lauren, what the town council had suggested. And so, it's back in the town council's hands, so we're hoping that.
It is?
Yeah, we sent it back to her yesterday.
Okay.
So, we're hoping that we'll hear something and Thursday we can, a lot of it was just a couple of word changes and stuff, but there were some things that were, we'll have to vote on as a committee. And then, we can get a final document. We're still a little unclear on how we're going to actually do the word processing part of the final document, whether town council's going to do it or Laurie or somebody, town clerk. Because our staff, our volunteer staff is kind of up against the, the word processors and, you know, having some glitches and stuff, so.
Okay, so the only advice we got from town council is that it can't, it should be a strikeout, so consistent with a zoning bylaw. So, strike out what you want to remove and add and underline what you want to add. And we should have the full document because I, my intention is to present, print the full charter in the warrant as an attachment. So, it'll be like, you know, this plus attachment A, the charter. Because I think, yeah, I think the charter is a really important document and everyone should see it in its changed state.
And I think Lauren said that, you know, there are changes pretty much in every section. So, it really, instead of trying to point each one out, that's going to be as long a document as putting the whole thing in there.
Absolutely.
So, Peter, what do you have now, if you, if you don't mind me taking a minute? What do you have now in terms of a red line document? Do you have?
We can, well, we, we thought we could do just what she asked, black, you know, instead of the colors. We have colors. We could easily change that to black. But what's happening is we got the version, the editable version we got was from the state, from E-code, I guess.
Okay.
And, and Adele's doing the, the physical, the legwork. And there's something about Section 7, though, when she gets into Section 7, it doesn't, it doesn't.
So, we might have to retype it.
Starts throwing all the comments over to the side.
You know, Laurie and I had this problem with the warrant because Sheila had, we had used so many different programs on the warrant. We just.
Peter talked to me before the meeting.
Okay.
So, I actually typed, emailed Cindy.
Okay.
Asked her, she has a Word version, because she must send that to General Code.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we can get that tomorrow, we can start.
We probably can pull it off, yeah.
Because I think one other thing Lauren suggested was for items that were moved, you do a double strike through and a double underline.
Yeah, that's really confusing.
All you can do in black and, black and white.
Right, right, but it, it actually shows up pretty well because she did some example.
But I do think it's really important and we have, you know, two and a half weeks, right? Because as long as we get it by April.
Okay, I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on that one because it is sort of a gaping hole there.
But actually, that, what's going to be in the warrant is very short, right? So, that's interesting. It's one little article, so.
Start.
I've got one other thing that I don't know if you're aware of, but there's going to be major changes at the National Seashore this year. They're significantly cutting back their ranger staff. They're going to be cutting back their programs. They're no longer going to charge for programs. Everything will be free, but there will probably be less items, less things. And they're also increasing the entrance fee to the park from 20 to $25 per car.
So did we, so.
So, I, I think there's going to be some major changes and pushback. And I don't know from a standpoint of how that's going to affect us relative to tourists, people coming in, but there's going to be a lot different now. They're doing all this from a budgetary standpoint and there are some changes down in Washington to add funds to the seashore, but whether that'll make a difference, I don't know. But there are some pretty major changes that are happening this year.
Thank you, I think.
If, if anyone in the community wants to follow up on that, would you, aside from contacting the seashore directly, would, is the Friends of the National Seashore still an organization that might be good to reach out to?
Maybe. I'm just not sure, I'm not sure how much they're involved in it, but I think, I think the towns might want to get some sort of presentation from the seashore.
Yeah, I was just going to say, maybe get the superintendent to come.
Because I think increasing the fees potentially reduces the number of people. Reducing the programs potentially reduces the number of people that come in to use the programs. It's going to be nice that they're free, but as a result of that, there's not going to be, you know, as many as there were before, as I understand it. So, you might want to get some sort of review with the seashore to have them come in and talk about it. I don't know, because the whole, the whole seashore advisory committee is so much up in the air.
Yeah.
I would think this is something that they would have been informed of and, and they would address it, but since they're not meeting, probably not. But I, I think going directly to the seashore, to ask them what changes are coming about.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Yep.
Good meeting to have. Thank you.
I did get contacted today by someone who's on the, was on a, part of the advisory committee from Wallfleet to discuss it, so.
All right, thank you, Art. Martin?
If I could go back to the warrant for a minute. The, there's a petitioned article, Article 38, which is non-binding public advisory question. At this moment, I don't know whether the NRC is right or the, the public is right. And I would abstain from that article, but I was wondering if we get somebody from. I don't know how you resolve that, but there's a lot of information missing.
Yeah, and again, it's not anything we can alter since it is petitioned.
The petition, the petitioner could come and describe it to us.
She, she was here two weeks ago.
Yeah, I know.
They did explain it.
They didn't have to say anything from the other side.
There is no other.
What other side?
It's a petitioner.
The NRC.
So, you want to invite the NRC here to?
I doubt if they'd come, but, I'm just saying, I, I don't have the knowledge to give a reasonable answer on that question.
Well, I, I think just to summarize, because I think the presenter that was here to talk about this article did a good job of explaining the purpose of it. You know, her intent is the fact that we have significant issues with our federal regulations with these types of projects. And by creating petitioned articles that advocate for better regulations around these things, it's more impactful from the ground up that we can send a message to the state to then send a message to the federal government to look at this problematic scenario that's happening right now. So, that's why they have these concerns from the community. I mean, it's our, I think this is a valid concern from people in our town regarding regulatory issues at a higher level than we are able to impact. So, by sending a letter stating that, that is our step in that direction.
Is, is that all it asks for or?
Yeah, really to direct Governor Baker and the state legislatures to, to employ all means available to ensure that these things are being done correctly.
They're secure.
Yeah, it's, it, it's really just, if you think of, you know, running around and getting signatures on a petition for, for a cause, for any cause, this just basically is a petition that the whole town sort of signs on to if it's passed. So, that's what it becomes, is, is the town asking, which.
Help us with this.
Right.
Pay attention to this problem that's getting overlooked. It doesn't cost anyone a dime, but it sends a pretty clear message.
Well, it's going to cost somebody some time.
I said a dime, but it might cost a little time to write a letter. I think that in the big scheme of things, that's not too bad.
I'm just saying I don't have the information to make a decision on that.
Well, we've got over a month until town meeting. You could look up stuff. I mean, Holtec is one of the top companies. I mean, they've basically got a monopoly on the deactivation of nuclear sites. I mean, you could look up what they do, what their regulation is and what regulations are in other countries because the US is far behind. That's what this is saying.
I think it is scary that this woman was able to just walk into the power plant without being, there's not even gates. I think that is a little.
Into the actual storage area.
Yeah. Yeah, and Holtec is notorious for cutting corners to reduce costs. I mean, the whole purpose for them buying it is to pay as little as possible to deactivate, to break it down. That's their profit.
They're being regulated.
But what they're saying, what this petition article is saying is that the regulation is not sufficient.
Yeah, they're.
I'm just questioning, I'm not questioning it. I'm saying I don't have the information to make a decision.
They're, they're being regulated, but I think it's kind of nice to send a letter saying, hey, we don't really want a local Fukushima based on bureaucratic ineptitude. I feel like that's, I feel like that's a nice thing to just say, hey.
Yeah, we're concerned.
All right, anything else? All right, motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero.
From the finance committee, I have a motion to adjourn. Art, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Five to zero. Thanks.